Hi, everybody. How you doing?
Doing all right, thanks. How are you?
Good.
Yes.
Hi, Rod. I think we have a quorum if we want to call to order. I will do that. Are we ready? I see a head nodding. I see someone waving. Great. All right, we've got Bernie, Brian, Melissa, here comes Jeff Lebel, the visitor. I don't, I don't recognize the 603.
That's Linda Cook.
Oh, Linda Cook, okay, great. Excellent. All right then. So meeting is called to order at 6:31. And our first item of business besides saying hello is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion? Yeah. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Melissa's second. Any discussion? Jeff? I think you're on mute, Jeff.
Sorry. Are we going to talk about the issue of reaching out to other towns?
Yeah, it's under
Yes, that's under the
And action items.
Yeah, we have
Number four.
Announcements, reports, updates, and correspondence.
Outreach to other towns. It's under an update.
Yep. But I I see. But there's no, I'd like, but what if there's an action item related to that? Doesn't seem like correspondence is really adequate to cover if there's an action that needs to be taken.
Well, it's, it's a multi-purpose agenda item, and you can, I mean, someone can move a motion for an action. I mean,
Okay, as long as it's not going to get in the way we had talked about doing that in this meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was my understanding we could, you know, discuss some follow-up, but
I, yeah.
Any objection? All right.
That works for me as long as, I know the Select Board doesn't do that. They won't. At least my
You want to, well, you wanted to say it's a separate agenda item. I'm okay with that, really. It doesn't matter to me at all. So, all right, we'll make it a separate agenda item. Outreach to other towns. We'll talk about it after town plan action items. Is that okay, Jeff?
Yeah, sure. I don't think it'll take very long.
Okay, great. All right, we'll just move that down. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. We have one change. All in favor?
I'm, I'm sorry. I was kicked out of the Zoom session. I just got back in.
Okay, hi Jeff, how are you? We're just working on the agenda.
Yeah, I have some comments about the agenda.
Sure, why don't you go ahead?
Well, under item four, among other things, there's this thing about director's report, which the planning commission has not talked about before. So I was wondering why it's here. It could be on a future agenda item. And then John McLean submitted a letter, I presume on behalf of the Select Board, which should show up under announcements, reports, and correspondence. And then I was going to ask a question about town plan action items, which maybe should be bumped downward.
Okay, so you said there's a letter from Joan McLean? Is that what you said?
There is a letter from Joe McLean relative, I'm sorry, may I speak without being interrupted?
Who's interrupting you?
May I speak without being interrupted?
Jeff, I think you have the floor.
Go for it.
Great. So there is a letter from Joe McLean in this packet that I think should be under announcements, reports, updates, and correspondence.
Are you talking about item seven on the agenda? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about a letter from Joe McLean dated June 1, 2021, who is not commissioned or engaged by the planning commission. So I infer that that belongs under announcements, reports, updates, and correspondence because it has nothing to do with us.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't commission. That's what I'm asking. I'm sorry.
Thanks for your comments, Jeff. Appreciate it. Brian, do you want to speak?
Yeah, sure. Jeff, that makes sense, but, you know, many of the packet materials weren't prepared by us, but they're pertinent to that section of the agenda. And so you know, that applies to that letter as well. May, we may find it relevant to our discussion for item number seven, so that's why it's there.
Well, Brian, with respect, if I may, it can be under announcements, reports, updates, and correspondence and still be mutually, you know, equally equitable, applicable.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, Jeff, as you always like to say, you're one of seven. So far, we have one change to the agenda that we're considering moving outreach to other towns to number six. Are there any other changes that anybody wants to consider? Given what Jeff just discussed?
Well, I guess the question would be, is Jeff himself proposing a specific change to the agenda? And if so, do we want to, how do we, how do we want to handle that?
I think if someone else feels strongly about any of it, we should talk, let's talk more. Otherwise, let's move on.
Jeff has his hand up, Jackie.
Yep, Jeff.
May I speak without interruption?
Jeff, you have the floor. Nobody else is talking.
Oh, thank you. I'm just trying to provide clarity going forward. So as I said on item number four, director's report, the planning commission has not previously discussed this, as I understand it. So let's put it on a future agenda item. That's all I'm asking. With respect to Joe McLean, I'd like to see his letter introduced under item four announcements, et cetera. And I'd like to see item five town plan action items moved down to something after planning commissioner code of conduct.
I can respond to some of those things as the chair of this group. I asked Rod to put together what I call the director's report, just a brief summary of items that I think are very content. It's very important for us to keep in front of us. We haven't heard any updates on these topics in a little while. I wanted to make sure we paid attention to it. I wanted to make sure people had a chance to see it in advance so that we could, you know, discuss any questions that we had. So that, that's my app, okay? As the chair, I thought that would be a valuable piece of information for the group, okay? And I I worked on the agenda with Brian, and we decided to focus on town plan action items in the order that it is. And that's why it's there. And as Brian's already mentioned, the correspondence from Joe McLean is pertinent to item number seven, so that's why we have it there. So those are the rationales behind the points that you raised. I hope that provides more clarity. Any other comments, Brian?
Yeah. Just two quick things. I mean, the director's report, that's, you know, identical in content to something that Rod does each and every meeting during the announcements. Part of the agenda, this is just calling it out specifically. It's not like this is a surprise that Rod tells us about permanent developments. And, and the issue with the legal opinion, that's an issue for the organization of the packet, not, not the agenda, right? Where we're, you have a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Rod, did you want to say something? You're on mute. Yeah, okay.
Yep. So relevant to the opinion provided by the town attorney.
Wait, is there a motion on the table?
Yes, there is, and I asked if there were any more comments.
Can I, can I actually speak without being interrupted by you? Thanks.
No, no, hold on. There's a
Excuse me.
This is a Roberts rule
Really?
Issue. So if there is a motion
No, 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 Jeff, no, I'm going to speak.
Rod, yes, Rod.
Can we, can we please have, try to be polite to each other, Jeff? We listened to you when you, when you had comments. I think we should listen to Rod when he has comments.
So what I was saying was to add clarification to the remarks about the presence of the town attorney's legal opinion was that in concurrence with the town manager and the chair of the select board, following the complaint from Stuart Richards at the last planning commission meeting, that there was no formal response from this body on the matter of his allegation that there was a there was an open meeting law violation. The sentiment of the group and the direction of the last meeting was to investigate the suggestion from Stuart Richards that there was an open meeting law violation. And to do that appropriately and correctly, it was determined that the most appropriate course of action was to obtain an opinion from council. So that's the background to town council providing the opinion.
Okay, thanks, Rod. Thanks for
And that's why, that's why it occurs at item seven, not in correspondence.
Okay, thanks, Rod.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the table that we'd like to vote on. Jeff Goodrich has another comment. Would you like to make a comment, Jeff?
Yeah, my, my issue is, my concern is the planning commission hasn't directed this action. That's all.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments? Okay. Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda with the one ad of calling out the outreach to other towns? Bernie, how do you vote?
Nay.
Leah, how do you vote? I'm sorry.
Aye.
Thank you. Brian?
Yes, for me, Jackie.
Thank you. Melissa?
Yes.
Jeff Lebel?
Ah, yes.
Jeff Goodrich?
Nay.
Thank you. Okay. We're on to public comments. Are there any comments on items not already on the agenda? The only person I can see on my screen that's a member of the public is Linda Cook. I don't know if anybody can see anybody else. Does anybody have any comment? Okay. All right. If not, let's move to the May 11 minutes. Can you have a motion to approve the May 11 minutes? Leah, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bernie. Any discussion?
I just have that I was, I was present, Rod.
Okay. Yeah. We just have to add Melissa as present. Any other discussion? Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, under announcements, under five updates, Francis directed commissioners' attention to the email exchange between town of Hartford, et cetera. I, I don't know why it goes on in this, you know, in this direction or this length. I think it'd be great to say between the town of Hartford, town of Norwich, great. There's a whole lot more that was in that memo under item six. The, I think it's the third bullet down. Goodrich stated he had circulated Orange Select Word Code of Conduct. I had circulated a pass code of conduct that talked about how Select Word had these rules hanging on the wall relative to code of conduct about how folks treat one another. Was something different from what the Select Words presented. And then I just want to know a couple of format things under item 11 and 12. Everything's bold until 11 and 12.
Okay. Leah Romano, yeah, go ahead.
Item six, first paragraph where it's mentioning Romano. Just adding that in addition to what I had said, it was providing context of the topic in relation to the planning commission election to chair and vice chair.
So how, how would the sentence change, Leah? Just so I'm clear?
Just adding a second sentence would, in just saying in, or after a semicolon, in relation to the planning commission election of the chair and the vice chair.
That's a second sentence, or?
Yes.
Okay.
So in addition to what is there, just adding that this topic was important as it relates to the planning commission election of the chair and vice chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I get it. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we have a request to shorten under number five, a request to embellish on Leah's statement in item six. And then Jeff, you wanted to mention the code of conduct on the wall, you said, in the, in the third bullet point there?
Yeah, yeah, Jackie, if I may, there's a previous code of conduct that I'd circulated that is not in this packet.
I think, is that, is that the PDF that Rod sent out with the packet?
No.
Something PDF?
I'm, I'm sorry. I apologize for interrupting. Sorry.
So it wasn't the PDF?
No, no, this, this, what Rod circulated was something brand new.
I thought actually that was the thing that you presented at the last meeting, the BSA something or other. No?
No, that was something different. Yeah, sorry. Sorry.
Okay. So what, what needs to be added here, Jeff, to make?
I, I, so my, I, I don't know how to frame this, but I, the Select Word had a code of conduct about how it treats folks, how we treat one another. And the Select Word has recently adopted a new code of conduct, which is fine. It's not the same thing that I'd circulated. I just want to make note of that.
Wow, okay, see, okay, that's not my recollection of the meeting, but, okay. Yeah, Rod, you had something on that?
Yeah, the PDF of the Select Board Code of Conduct, which I believe was adopted by them in 2019.
That was the PDF for this meeting, right?
The PDF that's in the packet is the same doc, was the same document that we reviewed on screen at the last meeting.
Correct.
And I guess as the as the director of, the planning director and the clerk of this body, my, what I took away is the direction to me at the end of the meeting, when people were saying what they wanted included in the packet, was, was that item, the Select Board Code of Conduct. So that, that's why it was included. I, I don't know, I, I am familiar with the poster on the wall in the multi-purpose meeting room of the Select Board. I don't have access to it. And I don't know what its status is as a, as a, as a current document. So I had included the PDF of the code of conduct, which is now what occurs on the town Select Board website.
Correct.
Because that is currently the Select Board Code of Conduct and was the item I thought people were identifying as something to be included in, in this packet.
Yeah, that was my recollection as well. And that was the document we looked at last time. Okay. All right. And then we have two items that should be bolded under 11 and 12 that aren't folded right now. Is there any other discussion on the agenda? Yep, Brian, go ahead.
I'm we'll get to it during the agenda item. I'm happy to look at the document that we have in front of us as the current Select Board Code of Conduct, but as much as I would like to, I don't want to read into Jeff's heart or his mind and you know, infer what he was thinking. And it, it sounds like what he was thinking is a different document or a different, a different list, whether formal or informal. And I think we should give him the benefit of the doubt and, and change the minutes to reflect that, what his intent was, regardless of what we have here before us to use for the meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. I have no problem with that. Anybody, everybody okay with that? Make that change. Go ahead, Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, I have no problem with what Rod did or what he just said, and I agree with Brian. I simply want to note that what I circulated is not what is included in this packet, and that's fine.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that correction. Any other corrections? Okay, we have a motion and a second with some changes that have been requested. Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, under item 11, I just want to add, it says Stuart said that OML. I'm not going to, I'm not trying to correct the clerk, but should say Stuart Richards, I think.
Okay, want to add his last name on number 11? Okay.
Yeah, I think, yes.
That's fine. Any other changes? Okay. Okay, all in favor? Bernie, how do you vote?
Yeah, aye.
Leah?
Aye.
Brian?
Yes, for me.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jeff Lebel?
Aye.
Jeff Goodrich?
Nay.
Okay. Let's move on to announcements, reports, and correspondence. And so you you have information in your packets, including some correspondence, Rod's summary on the three items that are top of mind for him. The childcare minutes, which Brian and others are doing a great job on that committee. I think it's important for us to stay plugged in. That's a follow-up action from the town plan. Jeff Lebel and the affordable housing minutes, that group is doing some significant work. We should be well informed about it. And, and so does anybody have any questions for Rod or Brian or Jeff Lebel on any of the content that's included in the, in that, this section? Yes, Brian?
Yeah, I would just say that we're working toward an interim report for the Select Board next month.
Yeah, it's coming up quick.
And yeah, folks are really motivated and it's been really, really, really good to work with that group.
Great. Thanks. That's good. Will you actually be presenting that to the Select Board, do you think, Brian, or delivering it to them in July? How do you think it's going to go down? You don't know? Yeah, okay. All right, we'll wait and see. Anybody else? Okay. All right, we'll move down to number five, which is the town plan action items. And the last time we looked at this document as a group.
Rod is trying to wave you off the highway.
I, I'm sorry, Jackie. Maybe I don't have this correct, but I thought that the outreach to other towns item was gonna happen.
I just put that as number six. I made that number six, sorry.
Oh, okay.
That'll just be
I thought you were going to place it between four and five, but
Right.
Maybe I had it wrong. Okay.
I'm sure I wasn't clearly, but I, my intent was just put it as number six after number five. It's fine. Okay. Great. Um, so anyway, back to the town plan action items. This is a compilation of the, of all of the action items that are peppered throughout the plan. Last time we looked at this as a group was the January 26th meeting. You'll see, you know, some updates from that time. And just to orient you to the document again, the numbers in the left column, again, I think are, yeah, they're associated with numbers in the plan. And the two pages that you have here are those items that are specifically our responsibility. Jeff Lebel raised the question at the last meeting. You know, where do we, you know, what's the big picture? What are we, you know, what, what's the next big thing we're working on? What is our, you know, what, what work do we have in front of us? And really, this is the song sheet here, these planning commission action items, key items that we're responsible for, we need to deliver on. So I guess, and so you receive this in the package and questions, you know, for you all. Any questions you have on these particular action items, but also I think you'll notice a lot of things are in the works because of the Affordable Housing Committee. You'll see a lot of these things being addressed. There are, we started out with our wastewater proposal that will be going to the Select Board as soon as we can get time on their agenda to get that study done. We have the density study that we'll be looking at an RFP on shortly. The last conversation that I had with Rod, we want to be looking at that at our next meeting in July so that we can get that thing in the works. We'll also be looking at a timeline. When do we expect that study to be able to be done? And what does our work plan look like around that study? I see training for ourselves so that we will be prepared when the study gets done to start to take, you know, do the, take the appropriate actions to examine our zoning regulations and what else needs to be done. So we need to get trained up and any other pre-work that we can accomplish while that study is in the works. The other thing you see here is there are a number of things are broken out by year. There are also a number of ongoing action items for us to keep our minds around. Many of the action items are related to the density study and addressing the zoning. But there's also some things here that relate to other committees. And one thought I have that I think would be useful, we have a planning commission person to touch base with those committees to see how they're doing. I was playing this role, you know, up until this spring, where I would get in touch with Craig Lane. We talk about the Conservation Commission action items. I would get in touch with Linda Gray, who is now Erin Lampert, to talk about Energy Committee action items and the status that, and Nancy Osgood from the Historic Preservation Commission. So Nancy Osgood from the Historic Preservation Commission. So keeping in touch with these groups, hearing how they're doing on these. So, shall we regroup now that it's 7:19 on my clock? I don't know if my clock is the same as everybody else's clock, 7:18 on my.
It's pretty close.
Good enough. Okay. All right, so.
Just one last, so has anyone heard back from Jeff Goodrich or they've reached out and there's no response?
Not, not since the meeting was back on, but I heard from him in, in, in the interregnum.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, let me try one more thing. I don't know if I can, actually, I think I've done everything I know how to do to get in touch with him. Let's look. Yeah, I don't know. Okay. Okay, uh, so we have the action items and our action item tonight is a, a point person for follow-up on three town committees. One is the Conservation Commission. They will be, Craig Lane has asked to be a lead on developing this master plan. This is number 19 on your spreadsheet for future trails, paths, sidewalks and bikeways. Use this as a basis for pursuing grants and other funding for design right of way, acquisition and construction of planned improvements. That's a 2023 deliverable, so it's not a next week deliverable. But anyway, looking for a person from our group to be the point person with Craig. So that we can start to get that done. Melissa?
I'd be willing to do that, that's fine.
Great, thank you.
Jackie, just for clarification.
Yep.
For protocol, just.
Yep.
We've acknowledged that Rod's gonna add in the minutes the time delay and now we're coming back to order. We've done that, just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 we have six of us here, so we're trying to.
Move along, got it.
Move, you know, down the field, yep.
So just to be really, so just to be really clear, I made a record of who's present now because it's slightly different from who was present before. And I've got the time, I've got the time interval, so.
Understood.
It'll look lumpy in the minutes, but that's about it.
Yeah. Does anybody else have a better way to get in touch with Jeff Goodrich? I just sent him an email to his Pathways account, but I don't know if anybody has another way to get in touch with him. Okay.
Hi there. Hi there. I, I'll go off because I do have another number that I might be able to reach him.
Great, thank you very much.
And I'll come back in.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good, very good.
Jackie, may I ask some questions about topic five?
Yes.
Right. So is the understanding for at least the two pages that you were showing on the far right where it says current status, just for a group understanding, it looks like we're typing in where we're at with certain items, but is the aim to say like a final word, like finalized or complete? I'm just trying to figure out, is the aim to fill it in or to get to a certain goal?
Oh, yeah. I mean, the idea, make progress on each of these and, yeah, keep a running tally of how we're doing.
And then as far as prioritization, is that gonna be an ongoing topic where we're looking at the ongoing items and the, like in annual progression?
Yes, so we have the, we identified, you know, we took a cut of priority when we did the timing in the town plan. But, you know, things move up, things move back, you know, we learn new things. So I think it's not, it's not draconian.
Right.
But it gives us some sense. And we all, we also can't do everything at once. So that was the other reason for the different timing. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just trying to figure out the best ways of getting, tackling the tasks. And then another question regarding the responsibility where some says Planning Commission and some says other things. Is this just gonna be a topic that we discuss or is there an, an, an understanding that if it has Planning Director at the top, that's something that Rod is presenting? I'm just trying to make sure my expectations are correct.
Under responsibility, that, these are the groups of people involved, or in the case of Planning Director, it's an individual. But what the attempt made here was to say, okay, what groups would be interested in this? What groups have knowledge of this? What groups have purview over this? So that's the reason for the responsibility. I could see you might, you may find we need to add a group or maybe a group doesn't care anymore, or maybe a group went away. I don't, you know, so there could be changes in that, but that was the effort that was made at the time that we did the plan. Yes.
Thank you.
Who, who would be interested in these topics?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. The energy items that you'll see on here are items 26 and 20 and 30. And I think, Ernie, at, at our last meeting or the meeting before, I've forgotten which now, you, you know, you were a representative on implementing Article 36.
Yes.
Which is what this says, implement to the best of our abilities, Article 36. So it seems like you would be our logical contact person with the Energy Committee.
Yes.
In these action items, there are, there are many, there are additional action items for the Energy Committee under, if you may recall, the spreadsheet has a tab for each one of the town committees. And so there, these, these two appear along with the Planning Commission, but there are additional items that the, the committee is working on diligently. But anyway, I could, I will bring those to your attention so that you have a full deck when you're.
Okay.
When you're in touch with them. But Ernie, that would be great if you could be like our energy contact.
Yeah, not a problem. Matter of fact, that's sort of in, interest of mine, anyway.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. And then the other one is the Historic Preservation Commission. They have just a few action items in the town plan. The main one you see here is advocating for preservation and adaptive reuse of historic Lewiston. We have thought of that as maybe an important site for the town of Norwich, although Dartmouth controls it and we don't have a lot to say about it, but in any event, making sure that we have visibility to any plans for that area. And if there is an opportunity to provide input, that we provide that input is really why that action item is there. Any.
I'm sorry, the, the Dartmouth site, which, which action item is that?
I was talking about Lewiston. This is action item number 22, just keeping a handle on what's happening in Lewiston. And, and the way we do that is about every year or so, we get invited to a strategic planning meeting with Dartmouth. And we comment and they say, thank you for commenting.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm open to doing that as long as someone tells me when that meeting is.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Jeff. That would be really good, good continuity because I think you were involved. That's good. Okay, thanks. Super. All right. One question I have, item number 22. Is, is, or I'm sorry, 21, participate in state, federal and other efforts to protect the Connecticut River, including basin plans provided for under 10 BSA 1253. Melissa, is this what you were doing with the River Committee that you used to be on?
I was on the, the Upper Valley Joint Connecticut River Subcommittee, something else, something else, something else. We were advisory. But I did resign and the other person that resigned before me that was on it, there was two representatives. So as far as I know, Norwich still has no representatives on that. But, you know, we, we kind of just kept, met with other Upper Valley towns and discussed, you know, what was going on with the, the river in Norwich. But Rod, did you know, did someone else volunteer to? It was lovely.
No, I just was wondering, I, I, when I, this reminds me of that committee that you used to be on. And I just didn't know if that's what, that's what that committee was focused on. And Rod, I know this is like an ongoing thing we have here. With this in response, I assume to some, oh, Claudette has her hand raised.
Yeah, literally.
Claudette, can you, welcome. You have your hand raised. Did you want to comment on this particular item or is your hand raised by mistake?
And no, it was raised. Chet Clem is now that Connecticut River watershed representative from the town.
Thank you. Is Chet, Chet Clem is like somebody from Norwich?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great. Oh, thanks for telling us that. That's good.
But I couldn't tell you his contact info.
Okay, all right. So Rod, is this a, a, a thing that you keep on your radar? Is that what this is?
It, it is in a way. So the, one of the functions of the Regional Planning Commission is to work with the State Department of Environmental Conservation. And there's a team there that does what they call River Basin Plans. And so they work with Two Rivers Regional Planning Commission to convene that group. And simultaneous to that, but with some overlap, is the Subcommittee that Melissa was once on and that Chet Clem is on. And I think it's the River Conservancy is its name now. It's changed. And so that's fine. I mean, I guess I'm in the loop is what I'm trying to say. And that stuff comes before the, the Regional Planning Commission. So there's more than one River Basin in the Two Rivers Regional Planning Commission, just area. And then actually, for various reasons, Norwich is in two River Basin Plans. So yeah, I monitor it in, is the short answer. Yeah.
Every once in a while, we'll ask ourselves, is there anything we know from Chet Clem? Okay.
Yeah, right. So Linda has her hand up.
Yes, I see that. Yes, Linda, go ahead, Linda.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yep, you can.
Okay. I got put in the chat room and you guys couldn't hear me or anything. So I just wanted to get back into the meeting.
Oh, you know, yeah, because probably you were on your phone or something. Okay, all right.
Okay, so did you make contact with Jeff Goodrich?
No, I could not.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you for trying that. Thanks for trying. Okay, all right, good deal. So and as I say, so the, the remaining action items here, you'll see a whole host of them have to do with the Affordable Housing Committee and that they are already engaged on most of them. And then quite a few of them are specifics, things that we need to address as we get to zoning in 2022. Are there any other questions on these action items? As I say, Jeff, we were trying to get to your thought at the last meeting. Let's get the big picture of our workload. What do we have to do? What are we focused on? Any other questions on, on these?
Yeah, you know, I, I appreciate bringing the list. You know, my, my question is like, what are we gonna do next? Like, what are our, what big thing? Like, we did the town plan? Like, what, what's next? I know at some point we're gonna be doing the zoning rewrite. That's several months away. Like, what's our big next project? Is it my question? So I'm looking for a shorter list, I guess. And I'm looking for all of us to help inform that decision.
I mean, the next big thing in my mind is the zoning project. And that begins with the density study that we want to kick off at our next meeting. And we also want to look at a timeline at our next meeting for what are the different components? What's the work plan to get that done? I don't think it's sitting around and waiting for the study. I think there are other things that we can do before the study is available. And we have the wastewater proposal to the Select Board. Waiting for a time to get on the Select Board agenda and what will be the follow-up there. I would say those are two very big things in front of us. In addition to the work that the Affordable Housing Committee is doing and follow-up with these town committees. That's, that's the work that I see. Is there anything I'm missing? That anybody else sees?
So let, let me see if I understand. So we have a study that we've authorized. And, and we're gonna look at the art, the draft next, RFP next meeting, is that right?
The July meeting, yeah. This is the RFP for the density study, exactly.
And then the wastewater study, we made a recommendation to the Select Board. And what's the status of that?
Rod, you want to mention, you want to clarify? Go ahead.
Yeah, um, the, it's not finalized yet, but the expectation is that the Select Board will be discussing the wastewater study idea at the June 23rd meeting. Claudette might have more information, but I think that the forward planning of the Select Board has identified that as the date.
Can I request that we be, I mean, I think it would be useful for us to be invited if people want to participate in that discussion. So.
I mean, if it's on the agenda, we can all come for sure. I mean, anyway.
I, I understand, but I, I don't know if there was, you know, I, I would request anytime something that we talk about in, in our commission.
Yeah.
Is on the agenda that we're given ample notice so we all can make a decision about whether to participate.
Good. So how do you think that'll go down, Rod, in terms of our ability to plan for attending? What are you thinking?
Well, the RFQ, which you'll see a copy, you know, a draft of at the July meeting should be circulating in the August timeframe. That's for the density study. That, that, there's two key characteristics to that. One is that it's not gonna take a lot of public participation because it's mostly an analytical thing.
I think Jeff was asking about the wastewater study and, and your time to go to the Select Board meeting.
So the, so the density study can sort of churn in the background.
Yep.
I'm not sure exactly what the timeline for the wastewater study would be if the Select Board chooses to proceed with the idea. My understanding is that because it's fairly loose, that with the Department of Environmental Conservation, that could be turned around in a month or so. And we would produce another RFQ, which would then, so think that would be in, also in the July, August timeframe out there for maybe a month. And then it's a question as to whether, when the consultants could commence that work. And that would run significantly longer. That would be a six-month project. So assuming for the sake of discussion, it starts late summer, you know, sometime in the fall, it'll wind up spring 2022.
Okay.
But, you know, and that'll be doing, you know, there'll be times when they want to meet. There'll be times when they want to talk with people. And there'll be other times when the Planning Commission will have time to do other work.
Yep. So what do we think about? Maybe I'm hearing like a draft work plan for us, like over the next, let's say, six months, because it's hard to see further than that. But, you know, maybe we could have a few things further out, but that always gets looser. But anyway, that maybe we could all take a look at, at the next meeting, you know, a draft is put together and then we, we can all see the draft before the meeting and then we can talk about the draft and get the draft in decent shape. You know, does that make sense, Brian?
Yeah, even if it's just the things we know, which is like laying out the milestones of density study and sewer study.
Yeah.
And figuring out like when our touch points are and when in time we have gaps to introduce other initiatives, like not even having to, to schedule those other action items yet, but just knowing where the pockets are and when those other things that are bigger than us need our attention.
Good. And I have a question too. So like when, when these things land on us, is there anything that we should have been doing ahead of time, you know, so that we're better prepared when it lands on us? So that's a question I have. Yep. All right. Okay. Jeff, any more on that that you want to add? Jeff Lebel? Oh, I'm sorry, Brian wanted to say something else. Go ahead.
All right, Brian.
I, I just wanted to make, like Rod, you were taking notes. Were you taking notes as the person taking minutes or as saying, got it, I think I'm the one responsible for putting this together? Like, what, what's, how do we get to what we've just been talking about?
You're, you're on mute, Rod.
I'm sorry, Brian, can you say that question slightly differently? I didn't quite catch what you, I didn't quite catch what you're.
Sure. Jeff, in, to use Jackie's words, asked for a bit of a work plan. And I said that would, that would be great and talked for a while and didn't add any clarity. But I just, my question is, who's preparing that? Are we tasking somebody? Are you taking that on, Rod? How do we, how do we get that at the next meeting?
I, I'm happy to do something. I, I'm happy to do something that probably will be something like as an edit, you know, like a very scruffy Gantt chart that will show the things that we know with a rough sense of the timelines of when, of when those things start and end. And there should be spaces around that and, and, and so forth, that we can identify other tasks that are manageable and can be done. So yeah, I can, I can pull something like that together just to guide the conversation. I wouldn't want to describe it as the definitive, anything definitive, just a sort of a working document to initiate calendar, calendar planning for the group. So, so while I've, while I've got the mic, at seven it's about 20 minutes ago, I guess, Jeff Goodrich emailed everybody and said that the meeting was ended by the host. This is the third time tonight. So does somebody want to email Jeff and let him, Jeff Goodrich? If you could look at your email and reply to him, just let him know that we're actually doing it.
I did that already. Yeah, I said we were in the meeting, but I don't have anything from him right now.
Okay.
I don't think, maybe, wait, maybe I just
What, what's weird is it didn't come in until Yeah, okay. I have a weird, there's a weird time problem with
Oh, wait, I just got something from him.
When it turned, when it turned up in my email, but that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that the group was aware that he's aware of, I don't know. I don't know what you want to do.
I'm sending him another message.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So I think we've done enough with that. Thank you, Melissa, for partnering with Conservation, Ernie with Energy and Jeff for following up with Stark Preservation. That's great. Okay. Why don't we move to the outreach to other towns? Is that okay with everybody? Number six. Jeff LaBelle, you want to? What, what do you want to come out of this discussion? I know this is important to you. So let's
No, I, I, well, I know Rod had an update, so I'd like to get his update and then just I, if there's any action, I just wanted the ability for us to make a decision about next steps. That's all. It's nothing, nothing too grandiose.
Okay.
What, what, what was my update? I, I can, you know, if people the only, the only thing I can add here is that each town has a website, some better and some worse than Norwich, with relatively current information about the members of the Planning Commission. And so if you're going to do some kind of outreach to a particular town, then that the only this, actually, the source I would use, I would use that and then copy somebody from Two Rivers Regional Planning Commission on the off chance that they've got current contact details too. And so if that's, if that's why people want to proceed, but I don't have an update necessarily on other town planning commissions or anything such as that.
Okay. Well, I, I wanted to suggest that we proceed with contacting the Thetford Planning Commission. It seems that this is kind of a low-hanging fruit. It's, you know, directly next to us there. We haven't had any recent contact with them. They're going through some similar issues around affordable housing and see how it works. You know, set up, see if they want to set up a time. And then we can, based on that, we can decide how we want to proceed with other towns. And I'm happy to make that contact if people think that makes sense.
Yeah, the one thing I would say, you know, as we get down the road here, if we get a positive response and we do determine, you determine, Jeff, that they want to convene something, that we're going to have to warn this meeting and have minutes and the whole nine yards. So just be, be aware of that requirement. That's a requirement. Yeah. Okay. Leah?
I'm just rereading from last meeting's minutes where there was an initial idea of Thetford, Hanover, Sharon and Hartford. So Jeff, are you thinking just start with Thetford? Or did you want to start with the four? I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah. You know, I'm just, I don't know, you know, I had some conversations with Jackie a little bit, you know, and, you know, there, there are issues around workload and around just like how is this going to work and what if they don't go well? So it, it seemed to me that the low-hanging fruit was to start with Thetford with the intent that we would then roll it out for all the others. So it's not that we would not do the other four, but the, we just have to start somewhere. And why not start with Thetford was the thought.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion?
Are people comfortable with me reaching out to Thetford and trying to set something up?
Yeah, Brian, sorry.
Sure. I just want to make sure. I mean, are maybe you don't know yet, but is the plan, Jeff, for you to go ahead and have a, an informal conversation with the, with somebody in Thetford or to invite them to something bigger right away?
My thought was that I would reach out, you know, to the Chair of the Planning Commission and tell them we're interested in, in doing this. And I've been designated to reach out and see if they want to have a conversation about it. Have a conversation. And then if they say, yeah, this is great, or if they want to take it back to their Planning Commission, they can talk about it and get back to us. You know, there'll be a little bit of time back and forth, but the idea would be hopefully to set some, up a larger meeting. Just kind of get to know you.
So, yeah, I, this is exactly what I'm trying to clarify. So what, what we're like approving is the idea of like a, a large-scale discussion as opposed to like designating contact people to just like be the eyes and the ears with, with neighboring towns, right?
I'm proposing to, yes, I'm proposing that we would have a meeting that not everyone would, it would be optional. Nobody would have to go, but it would be an opportunity for members of the planning commissions to get to know each other, to talk about the issues that are facing their town. And that we, yeah, we would hold a Zoom meeting at some point and it would get warned and all that jazz.
Yep. And, and we would be, we all be invited and if we wanted to come, we could come.
Yeah. And if we don't have a quorum, we don't have a quorum, we still meet. I mean, we're not going to take any action anyway.
No, there's no Ernie, you have your hands up?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering what's the purpose of, of doing this? I haven't got particularly, I'm not sure if I have checked, but I mean, I'm not quite sure what the point of, of, of doing of any kind of coordination other than I don't even know what the point of it is.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a fair question. We talked about this at the last meeting, Ernie. I think the, the thinking here is that it would be useful for us to know what our neighboring towns are doing and thinking and to talk about any areas of intersection. You know, and that right now we're kind of operating in the dark. We're doing our own thing. They're doing their own thing. There are certainly regional issues like affordable housing that might benefit from some conversation. There could be issues about boundary issues that we don't know about, or they could have concerns that, you know, why are all those Norwich people coming up here? Whoever, you know, and the point is like if we have a get-to-know-you meeting, we learn a little bit about what they're doing. They learn a little bit about what we're doing. We kind of identify whether maybe there are some shared issues that we want to talk about in the future. But, and, or maybe not. Maybe it's just now we have somebody, we can pick up the phone and call when there's an issue. So that's sort of where this is coming from. And I feel like to some extent, we don't have our finger on the pulse of what other towns are doing. It's a small area. It's a small region. There's a lot of regional issues and it would be nice to have built those relationships so that when we need them, we have those relationships.
Melissa? I'm sorry. Ernie, you started talking. I just wanted to
I, I'll wait to Melissa. I'll wait until Melissa. I do have another question.
Okay, thanks, Ernie. Yep, go ahead, Melissa. So are you thinking areas outside of just affordable housing? Or are we just looking to talk about affordable housing with Thetford? Because I know you mentioned that, that, I mean, obviously, Thetford is looking into affordable housing as well. And I've read about their issues as well, but
I, I am not proposing that we limit our conversation to affordable housing. No.
Okay. Like what other topics? Because I'm just curious, because then I'm wondering why wouldn't the Affordable Housing Subcommittee be better?
Because I'm not limiting our topics to affordable housing. I mean, the question is what, what are the issues that Thetford is grappling with right now? What are the issues that their Planning Commission is working on? What are the, where are they going? What, what, what issues are kind of the, of, of top line for them? And do they have any thoughts about, you know, issues that we have in common that we might want to work on together? That's the agenda. We share our issues. They share their issues. We get to know each other a little bit. And that, you know, we talked about this at the last meeting and, and there seemed to be a lot of interest in just trying to get to know each other and you know, so that's, we had a, you know, kind of robust conversation. I thought there was generally a lot of support. I know you guys weren't there, but you might disagree.
I was there. And I had some confusion at the last meeting too, because I just felt like we're trying to get our own act together and figure out what we're doing and get our own agenda together. So I just don't know if we, we have the clearest path. And so I'm just wondering if now is the right time to start saying, well, we're doing this and what are you guys doing? Do you want to work together? And we still don't know exactly what we're doing. So that's, that's my wonder is if, not that it's a bad idea, but if it's the time for this idea. Ernie, you had another
Yeah, my concern is that, you know, we're talking about the agenda, but I mean, there are people who dissent on what our agenda should be. And for instance, I'd like to see a, a much stronger interest or, or concern with climate and environmental issues than, let's say, development, which I think is detrimental to the environment and climate. Is any kind of, is, you know, unless all of us sort of go and meet all of them, I think that what happens here is we end up with a kind of unbalanced representation of what Norwich's agenda actually is. So I would, I would have to say that unless we all would be included, you know, in the, in, in, in any kind of meetings or anything like that, I think this becomes a pretty, I, I, I don't think it's a particularly good idea unless everyone's there.
Yeah, I, I heard Jeff say that others could be invited. But Leah, go ahead.
And my understanding from the discussion of the last meeting that we had, which is in the minutes under Section Eight, is that there was an attempt to lift the veil and have conversations with counterparts in neighboring towns that will impact our agenda and recognizing that we don't really have them. So I was in support of this idea as a way to pick up the phone and say, hi, our name is, your name is, and just bridge that before we're ingrained in the work. And from my understanding of what this step would be is that, for example, the suggestion was Jeff would make the initial contact. And then if a meeting is going to happen, they might reject the idea, then it would be a public meeting where others are invited to attend and discuss where I don't think any action items are really being, or motions are being made. It's really just an attempt to talk with our neighboring towns before we really engage in the nitty-gritty work that will be impacting our town. That was my understanding and that was why I supported the idea, because I do think a way to get out of the dark is helpful. And, and, and correct me if I'm wrong with that understanding, but that was my understanding of what this idea was.
Brian?
Thanks, Jackie. Ernie, maybe this would help. You know, I'm imagining a future meeting of hours where we get, you know, positive reaction from the folks in Thetford and we're in the process of planning a meeting and, and we're developing an agenda together with them. And to me, that, that requires a step here at one of our meetings discussing, you know, our proposal from our side, topics we'd like to cover. So I, I would expect we'd have an opportunity as a group to figure out, you know, what do we want to bring to the table and what we want to ask of Thetford? I think that gives an opportunity for anybody to discuss and, and propose topics, even if they themselves won't end up being in attendance. Not to say everybody couldn't be in attendance as well, but I, I don't think, I don't, I don't think we just have to leave it to chance to, to what comes up at the meeting based on who attends. I would think we would have some preparation as a group for that kind of forum.
Yeah, I'm not talking about leaving things to chance or something like that. What I'm talking about is making sure that you know, all viewpoints are represented. Because I don't really feel that that's what really happens, even, even without, you know, even within this committee, right, as it stands in here now, let alone what I see is going to be then presented to other people later. And that's why I think that it's better that it, right from the start is, is basically all viewpoints. Well, let's put it this way, the best thing is, is no viewpoints are represented when they bring, when this idea is brought up. It's simply stated, we're just, we just want to talk in general. And then, and, and it's made clear that, and you're going to have contradictory viewpoints coming at you from here anyways, because I know that I'm the contrarian in the group. And I'm sure they have somebody like that there too. You know, I think that's the only fair way to do this.
Okay. Thanks, Ernie. So what I'm hearing is Melissa's wondering if this is premature. Jeff is suggesting he will reach out to the contact from the Thetford Planning Commission and propose a joint discussion on topics of interest to both groups. There's no action being taken. We just would like to get to know them and what are they working on? What are their issues? Brian has suggested this would be a joint effort to create an agenda for this meeting and try to get at Ernie's point to make sure that an array of topics are represented. We would all have a chance to attend this meeting if we would like to attend it or not. It would be warned. There would be minutes taken and published. And that's what I've heard so far. Jeff LaBelle, you had something? Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I just, a, a bridging, a way to bridge this all. You know, you know, I think, I think Melissa has a point that we wouldn't be ready tomorrow to sit down with Thetford and describe what we want to do. But I don't think this meeting is going to happen, you know, tomorrow. It's going to be several months away. So I feel like there's enough time, right? If we like start thinking about, this might be in August or September, to have the conversations that we really need to have internally to set our agenda and agree on our priorities. And so hopefully that would be enough time to, you know, make it. And I, I think these things take time to plan. So that would be my suggestion.
Melissa? Yeah, I'm just not comfortable with the idea right now. So, but I mean, as we always say, I'm one vote on this commission. You know, so I, at this point, would not be ready to say that I would go along with it. Maybe that would change at some point. And I do understand this meeting is certainly not going to happen tomorrow. And these things do take time and things will happen in the meantime. But I just want to say where I'm at right now and that's where I'm at. Okay. Okay. So how do we want to resolve this, Brian?
I'll just put a motion on the table. I move to authorize Jeff on behalf of the group to reach out to the Chair of the Thetford Planning Commission and ask if they'd like to work together to plan a joint session on areas of mutual interest.
I just have one quest, clarifying question on this. With the way we set up the agenda, is it okay to do a motion? I wasn't, I wasn't actually picturing a motion for this topic. But I know I've been called out before about not doing a motion. It's something that didn't say we were going to do a motion. I apologize for the confusion. Is anybody, can anyone advise me on this? Go ahead, Ernie.
Well, I'd say we can make, we can still make it a motion. And I'd be willing to even second it if there was an addition to that, that there will be, that there is, at the discussion at the introduction of the idea of having a joint committee, a joint meeting, that there is no topics named by either side at that point. Nothing gets named until there's a decision to have the to have the meeting at all.
Just to be clear, Ernie, you're saying that if I reach out to them, I wouldn't say what, what the agenda would be. The agenda would be determined.
Not even what we're interested in, because, you know, just say, we want to have a meeting of topics that we're all interested in. And just leave it at that. And no, not naming what those topics are, because you know, I, I just see too much of an opportunity for, for, for skewing things that way.
It sounds like a hard sell to me, but go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, Ernie, I'm
Yeah, Ernie, I'm honestly genuinely sympathetic to the concern about prejudging what's on the agenda, because I don't know what's important to Thetford and, and so, but at the same time, like put yourself in Jeff's shoes, like calling somebody up and saying, hey, do you guys want to get together for a conversation? What about, I'm not allowed to tell you. Well, what issues are of importance to you? Read our town plan.
All right.
Don't think it's a practical strategy first, starting a collaboration. But, but I do, like I said, I'm sympathetic to the intent. And so, so the way I modify my motion perhaps is that Jeff made clear that we haven't determined an agenda and we hope to do so both together with Thetford and within our group through, through a process, as much as the meeting itself will be collaborative.
I think I, I kind of agree with you. I'm just, I just want to make sure that I, I understand. Again, I, I don't, you know, Irish politics are food for me. I don't want to see, you know, I don't, I, I, I don't want to see any kind of attempt at skewing or anything like that, because it goes on whether anyone likes to believe that or not.
I think we've heard your concern, Ernie. I'm sorry. We have a motion on the table.
I'm not done. So I mean, I, I'd be willing to say, go along with it, but you know, as long as if anything is named, if any concern, if any particular concern is named, that there's also a counter concern. So for instance, if, if it's affordable housing, then it's also, let's say, in my case, I'd be interested in seeing forest blocks preservation and, 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 and climate change control and all combating and stuff like that. Because they're, they're, they're kind of actually mutually exclusive. So I'd like to see a balance that's presented. And I think that it wouldn't be hard for Jeff to present ideas that are not what he's particularly interested in. But he could still present them.
Any new comments? Jeff Lebel?
Yeah, I, I think, I, with respect, I don't know if it matters if the comments are new or not. So, no, I understand for sure, but I mean, I think it's important for everyone to have a chance to be heard. So
Yep.
I there, first of all, Brian made a motion, hasn't been seconded. I'm going to go ahead and second it. Okay?
Thank you.
And then let me just respond to Ernie that I would be delighted to mention forest blocks and climate change among, among the issues that we're thinking about. In addition to affordable housing and wastewater, which seem to me, and, and, you know, and then sort of zoning reform generally, which seem to be like the big topics that we've, you know, that we have on our agenda. So hopefully that's.
I mean, I'm interested in controlling development, not expanding development. So you have, you have the alternatives here.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Rod, can you read back the motion?
Do you want Brian to make it again?
Yeah. There's a couple of things that went on. First of all, it was a really long and somewhat complexly structured motion. And then there's been a lot of talk since about exactly how to.
You need it repeated? Do you need it repeated, Rod?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Brian, you want to make the motion?
I guess I have to retract my earlier motion.
No, no one seconded it. So it was just words.
I seconded it. I think he's just clarifying. Brian, you're just clarifying again the nature of the motion.
I, I move that we authorize Jeff Lubel to reach out to the Chair of the Thetford Planning Commission on behalf of our group to inquire if we are interested in a collaboratively organized information sharing session at a later date on topics of mutual interest. And
About period.
Period.
It might be pretty close to exactly what I said previously miraculously.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
I've run out of paper, but I think I've got it.
You have the recording now twice, so.
Thank you very much, Brian.
I'm going to make a hit out of this. Yeah.
Do we have a second?
I already seconded it before. I'll second it again.
Jeff, okay. Do we have any more discussion or are we ready to vote? Okay, Leah, how do you vote?
Aye.
Melissa, how do you vote?
Nay.
Brian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jeff Lebel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ernie, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Okay. Thank you for that discussion. Appreciate it. I know we're moving on now to our Planning Commissioner Code of Conduct. You all received in the packet, the Planning Commission Bylaws, Select Board Conflict of Interest, Select Board Code of Conduct, the 24 VSA, 4325 Powers and Duties of the Planning Commission. And our action here is to update our Planning Commission Bylaws if we, if they need updating. Brian, would you be willing to lead this discussions?
Yeah. So thanks, Jackie, and thank you to a few of you who I was able to speak with prior to the meeting to, to plan this. I'd say two things. First is I think there's real value. Real value in having Jeff Goodrich present for this part of the conversation. And so the, my first suggestion would be that we postpone this discussion until he can be, until he can be here. My second point is to set us up more fully for that conversation at a future meeting. I'd like to make two observations based on my own reflections and my conversation with, with a few of you. And, and and, and also looking at the documents that you have in your meeting materials. It seems like when we think of our own rules as, as set out in our bylaws, there are some gaps that are addressed somewhat, but still insufficiently in the VSAs and what the Select Board has now assigned to themselves. And so those gaps are what I think we can focus our attention on in our own session next time around. The two gaps I see that are the biggest gaps and the ones most that could be most meaningful for our future conduct as a group are number one, the the formal and informal roles we assign to officers of the group, which could and should be better specified. Here, the Chair, the Vice Chair and the Clerk. The second gap that we can address together is on the process that we aspire to for agenda setting for subsequent meetings. Neither of these, I think, is is adequately addressed in our own bylaws. They're hinted at a bit more in the VSAs and the Select Board's policy. I mean, I think they would be fruitful topics of discussion and raise some important issues. And hopefully get to points of resolution and clarity and to a point where we could amend. Sorry, our own bylaws on these issues. So that's what I would propose for an objective for, for our next conversation on this when Jeff's able to attend.
Thanks, Brian. Jeff Lebel?
Yeah, that was really helpful to have an analysis of what some of the gaps are. So thank you for, for doing that. And I apologize, I haven't read the documents as closely as you have, but it, it seems to me that some of the concerns that I hear from people have to do with you know, whether they can speak uninterrupted and for how long. And I don't know whether we need, whether we'd be useful to think about and maybe we already have it. I just missed it, like some kind of duration of you know, sort of time where people can talk without, you know, and know that they won't be interrupted, you know, and if it doesn't go more than X minutes or whatever we want to do. And that, that's one issue. And the second is this, this kind of issue of the level of formality. You know, like, do we need to raise, all raise our hands using the raise hand button? You know, so people feel there's a sense of fairness. And I raise this because I think, I think when there's a lot of trust, you don't need these things so much. But when there's a lack of trust, sometimes some formality can be helpful. And I'm not saying we should do this or not do it, but I, I think that would be worth while to have those conversations.
Okay. Okay. So anything else? I guess what I'm hearing is, and I saw heads nodding. Go ahead, Brian. Brian?
Yeah, so maybe if folks are comfortable with that framing for the discussion
Yeah.
for next time around filling in those gaps. Maybe I'd propose to Rod that in the minutes they be captured with some bit of detail. So Jeff has that preparation as well.
Well.
Leah?
So will that be the only thing we talk about or is there potential opening for? You know, if there's something else that someone sees or?
I'd, I'd love for other stuff to come up. I, I, my thought was that's the most actionable thing that we can translate discussion into policy change. But certainly other issues, you know, are going to be on people's minds.
Yeah, thank you. So do we need to move on?
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is, yeah, we have good direction for the next discussion on this when we're all present. That's what I'm hearing. With, you know, suggestions of topics to, to address. While Brian goes and chokes to death, I'm so hope he's okay. I hope he's all right. Okay. Heads were nodding, we all in agreement that we'll do this next time? Okay, okay. All right, good. So then our next item on the agenda is the open meeting law. Rod included in the packet the letter from here we go. From Joe McLean. Any comment or discussion on the letter?
Leah?
I'm, I'm glad it was presented. I know that that was a question in the minutes of last week of proper follow-up. So I appreciate that it was there. To me, the letter seems to have a conclusion. My under, and so for that, I'm set with it, but I do see what comes from that letter could also be added in future discussions regarding just reminders of practices of this body, just as, you know, reminders.
Yeah, and I acknowledge I shouldn't have used the letterhead. I was really frustrated. And obviously, not Chair, not Vice Chair, won't use the letterhead again. And won't respond on behalf of anything again, but yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And I was also very frustrated, I have to say. It just feels, you know. Anyway, so I won't hit reply all, that's all. But I, you know, I, I also feel like there was no, no harm to the town done. There was no decision made. There was, you know. Anyway, whatever. I'd like to give peace a chance. That's what I'd like to do. Give peace a chance. That's my priority.
Yep, Jeff?
Yeah, no, I, I appreciated having legal opinion. It's helpful to have folks opine and it would I, I certainly have no reason to challenge the legal opinion and appreciate everything that Melissa, you've done for the committee and understand your frustration and appreciate your statement and same with you, Jackie. I think we all try our best to follow the open meeting law. Nobody intentionally violates it and in this case, there was no, no violation, but you know, maybe we came close and we should just be careful and I think that's all of us, you know, going forward and I'm I, I certainly have taken it to heart. I try not to send out group emails about anything to this group, so. Except for email problems when you're trying to get on the Zoom.
Except when you're trying to get onto Zoom, right? Okay, that's good. Any other discussion? Okay. All right. Next topic is other business. Is there any other business? Yeah, Ernie?
I'd just like to suggest that we adopt a policy and this might, this kind of plays into what we were talking about, but it's a little, it's simply practical. Last time I missed, I missed that last meeting. I had no intention of not being there. I had not received a copy of an agenda or no packet or any of that sort of stuff. For whatever reason, it could have been electronic. We just tonight had a huge glitch. There's no reason to believe that that's what, what didn't happen. I'm not blaming, blaming anybody that I didn't get to notice, but I didn't get to notice of the, of the, of the meeting. And what I'd like to suggest is that from here on out, and I'd like this to be formalized, it's sort of, you know, sort of, I don't know how, how, you know, sort of a rule or something. That if somebody hasn't said, given advanced notice that they're going to be missing, that at the beginning of the meeting, when somebody's, when, when a person's noticed, you know, a phone call wouldn't, would, would be really helpful. I mean, in that particular case, I might've come unprepared, but at least I would have been able to come or to let you know I'm not going because I'm not prepared or whatever would have been the case. I probably would have come unprepared. That's, I have no problem with that. But it would have been nice to, to have been that, that was an important meeting and there are things tonight that I'm trying to pick up on and play catch up on that I would have been at least a little bit more knowledgeable about had I been at the meeting. So I think, I think a policy of notify, making a phone call, it's only seven people on this committee on this, on this commission. So I don't think it's a big deal if one person or two people are missing and they're called if, if they haven't given advanced notice that they're not going to be there. I mean, if I'm sick, I'm likely to call at least the, you know, the town clerk and let them know, or I'll call Rod. I'll find some way of getting through, sick even. You know, only, only an emergency that would occur as the meeting is occurring would, would, would prevent you from giving somebody a notice.
Yep, Leah?
So is that, Ernie, is that meant as discussion for next week as we're defining policies and practices?
It can be included in that. I mean, that's, that's, you know, I mean, this is just, it, it's a policy in practice. So yeah, I think, I think that should be, could be included. It's a simple thing. It's not a big deal.
Yeah. I agree that it, you know, it can be a discussion for, it's a good idea for a discussion for next week. I just, for me, I think there's a difference between a policy and a practice. And so that, that's where I think the discussion could be and can save it tonight.
I mean, I agree with that too. I mean, it just should be something that's kind of, kind of expectable and enforceable. That's all, whatever, whichever way it works.
I mean, I don't, from my perspective, it's not that hard. We are seven, if we show up on the meeting, we're at Zoom and nobody heard from somebody, somebody can give them a call. I don't see it as, you know, I don't see it as warranting a huge amount of discussion, but anyway.
I agree.
Do you have a comment?
Oh, we used to just all RSVP to the email that was sent out and say if we're coming or not. So that would make it a lot easier just to, if everyone just says if they're coming or not. And then if someone said they were coming and they don't show up, then someone will call them real quick.
Well, I was going to say, or if for some reason they don't answer at all. Would have been my case in that case. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have answered because I didn't get the notice.
Yeah, we can talk about it next meeting, but I just. Because the other thing is we have, we know, like the next meeting is July 13th at 6:30. So we all know that now, today, we know that. And so we have that on our calendars and, you know, we manage to that is what I would say. And, and if we let, you know, I guess we could, all right, anyway, assume people are coming unless we hear from them and then they're not coming and then I don't know. It just feels to me like, yeah. If we haven't heard from somebody and they don't show up, someone can read. I don't know, it just feels to me like, um, yeah, if we haven't heard from somebody and they don't show up, someone can reach out. That's okay. That's not a big deal. I would take that on without any further discussion. If we could save discussion, I don't want to talk about it anymore.
Yeah, it's getting too hot.
It sounds like, it sounds like a good practice of mutual respect.
Yeah, let's just be nice to each other, okay? God, okay, future meeting schedule and agendas. I, we have a couple of topics that we've already talked about today. Um, one is the RF. Is it a Q or a P, Rod? RFQ? For the density study?
Q.
Thank you. Okay, RFQ and, uh, and then a rough timeline uh, slash work, you know, that'll be the bones for our work plan and we will fill in the, we can fill in the blanks and discuss the blanks in that work plan. Does that make sense? Okay, those are two topics I heard for next go around. Jeff Lubel?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should put the wastewater study on the agenda, given that the select board will have heard it on the
Okay.
Twenty, whatever, right? And there might be some follow-up meeting.
Wastewater study follow-up, good. Jeff, on this outreach to other towns, if you make a phone call and get some kind of response, do you want that under updates? Is that a separate agenda item? How do you see that?
Well, I, why don't we just take player keys based on what I hear back if they, if they, I get an enthusiastic yes and people want to, we can start talking about setting an agenda, but I, um, I think it would be nice, maybe we'll just leave it on the agenda and have a quick update and, uh, we can decide at that point if there's a need for more action.
Very good. Okay. And then we have the, uh, the code of conduct, so it's a pretty full agenda. Um, is there anything more important than these things that we've just talked about? Anything else? Okay.
Brian has his hand up.
Yep, go ahead. Sorry, Brian, yep.
Oh, yeah, the, the three folks have taken on their responsibilities to reach out to the other committees.
Yes.
There'll be any relevant updates by then, but I don't know. It should be called out within the updates and announcements or something separate or, or that.
Good.
But, um, should have that as well.
Good thought. Um, one way we can handle that, um, as a suggestion that might, um, save us some time and I think get a good result is, um, if we have a conversation with, let's say, Craig Lane, uh, from the Conservation Commission and we have some information about the status on the action lines and we enter it into the spreadsheet, okay? If Melissa did that, and then we post the spreadsheet with the new information on it as an example. This, um, you know, it could even, could be a Google Docs, right? Or however, the best way for us, I don't know if we're using Google Docs yet in the town, I'm not sure. But, um, anyway, that would be a way that we could, um, capture that information on a regular basis and have it under updates. If we want to discuss it further, we could discuss it during that time. I'm just trying to think through how to get through, how to be productive, actually. Any response to that?
Uh, just mindful of certain regulation or practice regarding, say, shared documents, but, um,
Yeah.
I'm fine with if it's a, something we're sharing with the, in this committee.
Melissa, you have a question on that? You look like you have a question. Yeah, no, okay, okay, all right. Okay, yeah, Jeff, you?
I'm sorry, did someone say something about shared document? I, I missed that. Did, we were proposing to use Google documents and does that violate? What, didn't we have?
I don't know if it does. That's a question.
We talked last time, right, in the town plan about this and it was some issue and I don't remember where we came down. That maybe, hopefully Rod, the town in Norwich probably knows.
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure that, um, Claudette or I know, but, um, I think that, uh, um, there are some potential problems using Google Docs and, um, I think one of them is the access question. And then the other one is sort of, um, the obsession with town government and, and date certain. So it's better to, you know, produce iterative drafts, you know, and then have, you know, a person, whether it's me or somebody else that's in charge of that document. And you get the update and then you date it, you know.
That's how we did the town plan. That's how we did.
So this is the July 4th version of the document that you got in June and then this is the fourth document.
That's exactly how we did the plan. So we'll just, yep.
Right, so that, so that there's never any confusion and somebody, if they really wanted to spend their time that way, could go through the packets for three years and look for the three words that were different between the July version and the August version. But then no one can say that there was something untoward going on, that would be. So my preference, as much as Google Docs is really efficient, it's kind of problematic.
Not appropriate here. Okay, Claudette had her hand up, but she put it down, so maybe we, uh, yep, there you go, Claudette.
I think she just fell asleep.
No, no, she had her hand up. Go ahead, Claudette.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, clarify that when you share documents, it's okay to share the documents. You just can't have any substantive discussion about said documents outside of your meeting.
Right, right, exactly. Okay, all right, that's helpful. So we'll continue to use an Excel spreadsheet and different versions of it. And, um, um, I can send that out to people because I have a copy of it. It's actually, uh, it's probably in your packet now, but it's probably a PDF. So I'll make sure you have an Excel spreadsheet so you can e- enter onto it as you have new information from either the Energy Committee, Ernie, or the Conservation Commission, Melissa, or Affordable Housing, uh, Jeff, and, um, that would be great. Okay. All right, um, so we have a full agenda. We'll include the town plan follow-up as a standing action item. That's a good idea. Any other, um, input for the agenda? Okay. Uh, any public comments? Yeah, Jeff, I mean, Rod, I'm sorry, you had some?
Yeah, just, um, one of the questions that was raised by Jeff Goodrich at the beginning of the meeting was to do with the director's report, which.
Yes.
So, so without wanting to make a big deal out of it, I just would prefer if this meeting either decided to address that question at the next meeting, like whether I should do it or not. Or if you could just quickly say, you found it beneficial and you don't see any big deal with the way it was done or you just really don't want to see that ever again.
Why don't we just go around the table quickly, uh, and hear everybody's comment. Leah, what is your thought?
I like having regular updates from the director or various subgroups that we have here. I, I think it should be standing agenda items.
Thank you, Leah. Jeff Lubel?
Yeah, I, I think that's great. Can we call it a, a planning director's update?
Yeah. Okay, there you go. That's good. Brian, I'm just calling people in the order I see them. Thumbs up on Brian. Thank you, Melissa.
Yeah, like, I mean, I don't really care if it's oral or written, but I like it in the updates.
Thank you. Uh, Ernie?
I, I, I like the idea of the updates. I, I just got to say that I have never been comfortable with the idea that we have a planning director as opposed to a planning administrator. Um, so I have a problem with that particular thing, but it's a different issue altogether.
Okay. Right, so Rod, I think you have your direction. Sound good? Continue with your bullets. They were very, very helpful and I appreciate you taking the time to put that together. Uh, okay, so then, um, any public comments before we have a motion? We have Claudette or Linda, any public comment? I don't see anybody else. Claudette has her hand raised. Go ahead, Claudette.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that you may want to, um, sorry, um, clarify with Herb about the shared document thing. I'm thinking that I, we use the Trello board, but it is really restricted on who can enter that information and it's a view only for the other members of the board. It's not, um, allowable for.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So just to clarify, shared document procedures with Herb, that's you, that's a good.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good. Thank you for that. Yep, we're trying to do the right thing. Good. All right. Any other public comments? If not, do I hear a motion?
Move to a turn.
Thank you. Second. And I thank you for your time tonight. Sorry for the technical confusion, uh, but, you know, hey, we made it. Uh, with 20 minutes down when we got back. Thanks for coming back. I appreciate it.
Vote on the motion to turn?
Uh, no, I was just saying goodbye before we did that, because I know you're all going to turn it off immediately. This is my comment. Okay, all in favor of a journey? Aye. All right, thanks a lot, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.